...New Paul's Planning Board Meeting of July 27. First up on the agenda is review and approval of the July 13th meeting minutes. Have a motion to approve. Second? Thank you. Any comments? All those in favor? We do have a joint meeting with the village, continuation of public hearing on the Jewett Family Farms on Huguenot Street. To have a motion to open the public hearing. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want me to do this? Motion to open the public hearing?
Aye.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Okay. Does anybody wish to make any comments on the Jewett Farm application?
Hello, my name is Ray LaHut. I'm here to speak about the Jewett Farm subdivision. I have no conflict with the owners and in fact, no relationship at all. My presentation is purely to inform the public and board about the past agreements made. Please consider the following. Two Farm Campaign declared in 2007. Jewett Family Farm LLC of 104 acres, Kusla Farm, 77 acres. Go to the web and look up yourself. Two Farm Campaign declared March 16, 2007. The Walk Hill Valley Land Trust re-responds. OSI matched the Walk Hill Valley Land Trust with a challenge grant for a total of $962,000 in benefit. Conservation easements, land swap between Harcourt Preserve and Jewett Farm. Access trail along the Walk Hill River from Harcourt Preserve to both farms. This is the actual agreement I got today at the Walk Hill Valley Land Trust. So I'm going to go to page five. Going three, three subdivision. Any subdivision partitioning or otherwise converting the property into separate parcels is prohibited. Okay. 2008, Kusla wanted to expand their farm and purchase 82 acres from the Jewett Farm. This would not create a new lot, but rather a lot line revision. The deal falls through. This is an article readjusting the farm. Both farms part of community-wide effort that successfully placed a hundred conservation easement in perpetuity. Coming back, Jewett worked with the Huguenot Historical Society to conduct a land swap whereby they would give her approximately 10.5 acres of farming land. She would turn give them approximately 22 acres of land before you know which is considered to be within the Harcourt Park. Village Planning Board Member, Parents Board refused to vote on approving the subdivision, which would allow the Jews to continue to maintain their 10-acre lot. That lot includes the existing old farms border Huguenot Street as well as the road access to the future driveway, which was never put in. So the deal falls through. The Kusla Farm has now, this is 2015, Kusla Farm has new owners, Ron Kusla pocketed the money and sold his farm. The Jewett Farm wants to subdivide 10 acres of the house, which is listed at $1,290,000. Here's the listing. And a 94-acre farm with no buildings on it. If you want a self-farm, I think you need to store equipment and supplies and I don't know how you're going to farm 94 acres without buildings. The Walk Hill Valley Land Trust agreed. When I talked to the girl who runs it down there, she said that the Walk Hill Valley Land Trust agreed to the subdivision, which will create a new lot in exchange for land swap with Harcourt Preserve, access trail along the Walk Hill River. It sounds familiar. There's no new benefit. The Two Farm Campaign is yielding a hefty crop of cash. So think about that when you make your decision.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else wishing to make any comments?
I just have a question. My name is James Lee. I'm New Paul's resident. When I hear the word farm, maybe I'm confused, but I think of agriculture. Is this what we're talking about? How are we defining the word farm, say, for all of us?
It's a, oh, sorry. I want to ask the answer question.
Meet the definition of farm in the town.
Would you like the farmer's answer question?
I'm Mira Miller. This is my husband Dakota Miller. And our intentions for this land is to set up an organic vegetable farm. We currently are farming in New Paul's and run farmers markets in New York City. So we do diversify vegetables and eggs. And that's our intention. That's how we make our livelihood and that's our goal for the rest of our lives.
Thank you all for the clarification.
Anybody else wishing to make a statement at the public hearing on the Jewett Farm subdivision? Okay. I'm going to go move right into the application review on it. At the joint meeting with the village, there were a couple of suggestions that were made for the, let's see. And I'll just, there were discussion, in fact, no farm work or housing be allowed relates to lot number two. George Rodenhouse said he would get together with Joe for what's allowed, what's not allowed on that.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize that George was not going to be here today. So he had sent us an email earlier today saying, "I miss Joe, more yellow by phone, but rereading notes 10, 13, and 14, I'm satisfied. They are sufficiently clear and withdraw my comments. I do believe that the planning boards should attempt to define the trail as best they can, realizing it will not be laid out until later this year. On the plat, such aspects as width, signage, materials, clearing, fencing, if any, could be prescribed or prohibited." That, of course, is all within the board's discretion should they have any concerns. Because again, the trail will be solely in the town of New Paul's. I did, when I got this email today from Mr. Rodenhausen, I forwarded it to Christie Boor and to the applicants to say, you know, please see the note below. Do you have any information that we would be able to share regarding the trail at this time? Christie emailed me back and encouraged me to reach out to Robert Hare from the Walk Hill Valley Land Trust and discuss with him what their issues and concerns are. He actually was, I caught him driving back from Jersey, so he was unable to attend the meeting tonight, but he gave me permission to share our discussion wherein they are starting to move forward with the design of the trail. They've kind of looked at it from the Walk Hill River, they've looked at it from the bank, and one of the things that they realize is that the bank of the Walk Hill River is not necessarily a stable line, which I guess we all know, mother nature has good control over. So one of the first things that they're trying to come up with is agreeing on a definition of the edge of what, where the edge of the river is, something that will last in perpetuity. And then the next item would be what would be a reasonable width. He said that they have been very, very fortunate to have Tom O'Dowd from the Conservation Committee is working with them and with the Millers to try to come up with a reasonable plan for the trail. And I had suggested at the last meeting, and Mr. Hare agreed that it would be fine with them if we noted on this map that the details of that trail would be shown on the revised map to be filed with the county clerk, just relating to the trail itself and the conservation easement stipulations that are attached to it. Again, because it's too difficult at this point in time to try to tie them down, that seemed to be a suggestion, because I certainly understand George's concern about making sure that the conservation easement and the filed maps all jive and work together. And I think that we can achieve that through filing a separate map as opposed to trying to add it to the subdivision map.
And you'll send me a copy of George's comments?
Yeah, I can forward you the email. I'm sorry, I didn't realize he would not be here to speak for himself.
Okay. Board members, have any comments? All right, okay.
We've gone through it. It looks pretty clear. Cotton dried. I'm excited for another organic farmer town. That's our match.
Okay.
And I just do want to clarify that the trail through this farm and the Kusla Farm that they're currently negotiating is new to the conservation easement, because Walk Hill Valley Land Trust is not permitted to change or lessen any of the restrictions on that conservation easement without a direct benefit back to the public. So I do want to clarify for the record that that is new and it is a benefit to the public and that Walk Hill Valley Land Trust is bound to do that, or they can't change the conservation easement.
Okay. What I'd like to do is go through a long form, seek a determination. Are you ready for it?
No, we have to do a long form because it's next to the historical. So this was a type one. Sorry. Do you want the EAF itself as well, or just the part two?
We should have both.
You should, yeah. And you should have one of your records, but if you want to use mine more.
You ready?
I think, I think, I think we were also waiting, there was not a quorum at the last meeting, so I think you still needed to, you had declared your intent to be lead agency. Everything had been circulated. We got no comments back, but I believe that the board was unable to declare themselves as lead agent at the last meeting.
Well, take the first step first. I'll make a motion, declare the town of New Paul's Planning Board lead agency on the Jewett Farm subdivision. Second? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? And our lead agency. Ready to do this, or, okay.
Pages. These are all the questions that they have to ask themselves, whether they can say.
Anything that could do with more historical destroyers than that? One of these things.
We want to see impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction or physical restoration of the land surface of the proposed site. There's a proposal for a driveway on the site, construction, so the answer would be yes. Proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet. That would be no. Proposed action may involve the construction on slopes of 15% or greater. That is no. Proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of the existing ground surface. The answer is no. Proposed action may involve the excavation or removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material.
Yeah, you want to stay on the land.
Proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. Construction of the road would take a couple of weeks. That would be no. Proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment by herbicides. Answer is no. Proposed action is or may be located with a coastal erosion hazard area. The answer is definitely no. Impact on geological features. Proposed action may result in modification or destruction or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. Answer is no. Impacts on surface water. Proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes. There's no construction being proposed within any wetlands or nearby wetlands or streams. The answer would be no. For floors, the impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or natural fur. Answer would be no to that. Impact on flooding. Proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding.
All the development is proposed outside the flood zone?
Outside the flood plain. Answer would be no. Impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air and air source. The answer is definitely no on that. Impact on plant or end animals. The proposed action may result in loss of flora or fauna. The driveway itself is being constructed over, it's just an already minor clearing that's going to go over.
It's over an open field right now.
Better really putting down gravel. Answer is no. Rate it's the impact on agricultural resources. Proposed action may impact agricultural resources. Agricultural properties, so I would say the answer is yes. Proposed action may impact soil classified with, within soil group one through four of the New York State Land Classification System. Say that would be a small impact. Proposed action may sever cross or otherwise limit access to agricultural land. It's actually a driveway that's going to be able to connect land. The answer would be no. Proposed action may result in the excavation or compaction of the soil profile of active agricultural land. Would be a small impact just for the driveway. Proposed action may irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural use, either more than two and a half acres if located in an agricultural district, or more than 10 acres if not within an agricultural district. Doesn't hit that threshold of two and a half acres, so the answer would be no. The proposed action may disrupt or prevent installation of an agricultural land management system. Answer is no. The proposed action may result directly or indirectly in increased development potential or pressure on farmland. So the answer is no, or at least a very minor impact. The proposed project is not consistent with an adopted municipal farmland protection. Say it is consistent. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from, or in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and the scenic or aesthetic resource. Answer is no, consistent. In fact, on historic and archeologic resources, proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archeologic resource. The answer is yes. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any building's archeological site or district which is listed on or has been nominated by the New York State Board of Historic Preservation for inclusion on the state or national register of historic places. This is not wholly or partially or substantially contiguous to a building eligible for listing. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area designated as sensitive for archeological sites in the New York State Historic Recreation Office, archeological site inventory. The answer is no. Proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an archeological site not included in the shipo inventory. There's no records of.
No, nothing that we're aware of.
Sensitivity. Answer is no.
Nothing that came off in the listing.
Impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of the open space resources as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. Answer is no. Impact on the critical environmental area. There's no critical environmental area designated there, so the answer would be no. Proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. Say the answer is no to that. Proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy. There is no development being proposed except for the driveway. The impact on noise, odor, and light. Proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odor, or outdoor lighting. Say yes to that. Proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. The only farm operations.
Do you use a lot of machinery that makes all the noise? Tractors.
Tractors. And that big monster.
Nothing bigger than one's being used to hang.
Yeah, that's currently being used.
Right, it's currently being made, and so there's tractors on the site now, and then there's the adjacent Huguenot Street Farm Partners that use similar equipment, so.
So the answer would be small impact. The proposed action may result in blasting within 1,500 free of residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, nursing home. The proposed action may result in routine orders for more than one hour per day. Small impact. The proposed action may result in light shining onto adjacent, onto adjoining properties. The answer is no.
No work in after dark. No headlights.
The proposed action may result in lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing lighting conditions. The answer is no. Impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. Is there any spraying that's going to be going on, it's going to be air war?
The farm is going to be running organically?
The answer is no. Consistency with community plans. Proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plan. It is consistent. Consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. Say the answer is no to that, since there's one in the matter here. Did it, Mike? I have a motion to accept negative declaration on the Jewett Family Farm, seek a determination.
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on it? All those in favor? Aye. Joint motion. Make a motion to close the public hearing on the Jewett Farm two-lot subdivision. Any further discussion?
Do we want to close the hearing with both village boards, or village anymore?
One at a time.
One at a time.
All those in favor? Aye.
Motion to close the Jewett Family Farm public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have a motion of preliminary approval to the Jewett Farm two-lot subdivision. Negative impact, and.
I what?
Oh, preliminary, it's a subdivision, okay? So you need preliminary approval for the Jewett Farm two-lot subdivision. So that's what I'm looking for. And a motion. Make a while. Make. Any discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
So does the village then do preliminary so that both boards are granting preliminary before we move on to final? Is that?
I think we just close the public hearing.
We close the public hearing. Next step, we've done the secret determination, next step is close the public hearing. Step after that is preliminary subdivision approval. And we proved it from the town point of view. Village.
Yeah.
But they had to prove their side.
So is there a motion to approve preliminary subdivision?
We close the public hearing. Next step, we've done the secret determination, next up is close the public hearing. Step after that is preliminary subdivision approval. And we proved it from the town point of view, village. Yeah. But they had to prove their side.
Other than.
So, is there a motion to approve preliminary subdivision?
Someone.
Second.
Any discussion, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yes, Jim.
Just, there was discussion about this separate map talking about the line and the rest. Typically, I mean, would this board make that a condition of the final approval?
Not the actual filing of the map, but the note placement on the map.
On the map. Okay, so the notes to be placed on the final map.
Right. Yeah, basically what I expect we would do is make sure that we have the notes correct that we want on the map prior to its filing, and generally what we've done in the past is reviewed by the town engineer and the chairman and authority to sign based on the conditions that we're imposing.
So the motion for preliminary approval would include that condition with those notes on the final?
And might as well ask the same question of the village plan. Also want to add that stipulate a condition with the preliminary cloud approval, or?
Yeah, we do, we want the attorneys, whatever their notes are that they're agreeing about along with having, should be one of preliminary approvals.
So, given that there is, that we've addressed the public comment, that there was a neg deck granted on it, I would ask the board to consider waiving the final public hearing and granting final approval this evening?
Make a motion to waive final public hearing on the Jewett Family Farms. We did have one person speak, we didn't have anybody speak at the meeting in the village. Incorporated those comments going forward on it. So I'd ask for a waiver of final public hearing. I'll second it. Any discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye. Similarly, motion to move the final subdivision approval. Someone?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I would make a motion to grant final approval of the Jewett Farm subdivision contingent upon, the map notes has been discussed, continued upon a village granting final approval at their next, well, village granting final approval when you feel, that's up to you. Those two conditions.
So, so then, village is not, are we going to meet again?
No. Village is meeting next week, and they will vote on.
Their final.
Final approval.
On this.
Under the same conditions. Now, if they don't, then the conditions aren't met, so we would come back again. But it's, they need to vote on it also. So based on the conditions of the map notes and village board approval, make a motion for final approval of the Jewett Farm subdivision.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
The one thing I will add is, so the board doesn't have to really, the applicant doesn't have to come back, that the board authorized the signing of the map by the chairman, subject to the map notes and the board approval, that I would have the authority, you have to review by the town engineer, to sign on the, because you don't have the final one in front of you, that's why I'm saying that.
Motion for that?
Hey, I better have a motion for that.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So. Two comments.
Yep.
Since our chair of the village plan board couldn't be here tonight, and his request was that we postpone final approval until our regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, his intention is to get a resolution from our annual attorney. At this point, I don't see any wrinkles, I'll make certain that you're contacted well in advance in case there's any questions or any need for you to come, but I don't anticipate that there will be. And I don't anticipate any further issues with it, but he has asked that we wait until that. The second thing is, and I'm bringing this up just as an idea, you'll note from the preliminary map, and I did talk to your chair about this, that this subdivision will end up with a 10-plus acre parcel primarily in the village with a tiny piece of the town and a substantial piece of agricultural lands that's primarily in the town with the road access in the village. My suggestion for consideration, perhaps the attorneys can talk about this, is that for the future, that we work out an agreement where the small parcel in the front that already has a house and barn on it, if there are any future needs for projects to come forward to any board in the, that require any approvals, that the village be granted the right to deal with those exclusively, and likewise, any projects that might come forward from the back agricultural land, that it would be the sole discussion of the town, so that we can expedite this process. It's been lovely working with you, but.
I understand. Joe and.
Yeah. I actually like being, I like the two boards being involved in that first.
Yeah, but it has its advantages, and we don't get it very often, but we'll take a look at that.
You could consider with the legal.
Some sort of an agreement. We have it in more than one place, that the line runs, the village lines and town run through properties, but anyway, for this one, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, it's worth taking a look at, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you both boards very much for your assistance throughout this process.
Can you use a hand?
Thanks. Thank you. Sign my life away? Yeah, I haven't done that before, have you?
Want to hang around?
Oh, yeah. We missed this one the whole, you kids.
Okay, we're gonna do a little shuffle.
Sorry for minimizing the meeting.
Get the other guy in there.
I'm Tim Brooks, sorry about those. I'm a buck now.
No, we're not, we're not there yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, it isn't. Except, oh, yeah, you want, okay, yeah.
I had a little bit more detail.
Well, just hold on a second, let me get. All right, next up on our agenda is conceptual reviews and briefing.
Can I get these up?
Yep.
Yep, all right. I just, I didn't.
Just make sure Kelly gets one before. Yep, got it.
Should I sit down?
Yes, you can sit down, we're not that married.
Thank you. I didn't think you were.
Now, gather your attention, please, if you want to have a discussion, please take it outside, I can't hear the applicant. Thank you. Okay. What have we proposed here?
So this is a two lot subdivision for 66 Mount Goss Road. It's currently one 11 acre lot with one house, and I propose subdividing the house on an acre and a half, and then having a remaining nine and a half acre lot, nine acre lot, nine and a half acre, I'm sorry.
We eight one five up there?
Right by Unison?
Okay, generally what we do, it's just from the board perspective, any comments that we have on it. Lyle, do you have any comments on it?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. We had the, generally what I would suggest is, at least from my perspective on it, is that to ensure that you have sufficient area on it, maybe that 1.5 should be a little bit bigger.
Sure.
Sometimes we get into issues on frontage, on side yards, on various other things that run into, it's not staked outright, you know, all of a sudden you find yourself.
Sure.
So, I mean, you have plenty of room on the other side on it, so unless you, unless there's some.
Yeah.
You know.
I have a total of 311 feet.
Yeah.
And I need 150, so. So I don't have a lot to play with there, but the existing house is located almost perfectly with a 40 feet side yard setback.
Yeah, I just.
But your point is well taken.
And again, it doesn't have to be, you know, you got a restriction on your front yard, obviously you want to make sure that you have both buildable lots on the front yard, but it doesn't mean that the lot line would have to go straight back either. It just, that's one of the things that I would take into consideration. Other than that, they'll both be on the municipal water system, they'll both have their own separate, beach field and stuff. I don't have anything else I'd add.
Are you just preliminary?
Right, this is just a kind of conceptual, yeah. This is just a conceptual, just once it gives an idea of if the board had any major issues with the layout, or whatever else.
Anything, sure.
That show on that, you know, what we have is the first cut is the two lots, so this gives us a little bit more detail about it, but, you know, from this perspective, I haven't got any.
Can I ask a question? The 11 show up that you showed seems to be on the hollow lot in the house.
It is, yes, yeah.
And your intention is to continue that situation? I mean, to divide it? Is there any?
Well, I'm hoping both houses can use that, maybe I can move that to the lot line, because I don't think I can, I can't move the lot line, so it is right on that.
But if your warrant applies on the middle lot, that would need enhancement to.
Yes.
To maintain. I mean, I want to inquire of the board guys whether that.
Sure.
Yeah, tell them what you're planning on doing on it, and whether it's advantageous. That's why I was saying, these little things that show up on either side of the boundary, you want to make sure, you know full well what it means being on one side or the other, what you would have to do. That's one of the things that we find ourselves with, issues on that, but.
Mr. Intention, is it all student housing on the other side, or, I guess, I'm just guessing out from your email.
My, I live at the existing house now, we recently bought it, my wife and I, but we intend to sell the house, the existing house and build out, build out our home on the, yeah, no, no student housing.
Oh, I always wanted to, okay.
But that existing house was cut up originally, before we bought it.
No, I understand that, I just want to make sure that, yeah, one of the things we want to see is, you know, really the layout on two lots on the.
Well, I understand, yeah, sure.
And then further on it, whether this is, what the intent was, one of the questions, if you're going to build on this, was the intent for you to have all 9.5, 9.5 acres, and if so, there may be some, you know, we'd have to see what, you know, whether it could be cut up again, or if it's not your intention, then we can put it in different.
Right, well, the way the regulations are now, it couldn't be subdivided again.
Right.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be my intention.
Understand that.
You know, I farm right now, and I would farm it to some degree.
What kind of site, this is, yeah, from that proposed document?
I had the county guy out, and he said it's fine, he said, the only thing is I might not, I might have to move it closer to the center, because there were, the county hadn't mowed the shoulder, and he didn't know if they mowed that, but then they recently mowed that, so. So it can go somewhere there.
Driveway on the other side?
The proposed driveway.
No, across the street, the driveway is.
Are there driveways across the street?
Right.
No.
Don't worry. I'm just trying to see in my mind, it's past Unison?
No, before the long white house.
So it's like Morning Star?
No, no, it's, it's on the same side as Unison.
Okay.
And it's just the driveway before.
Okay.
It borders Unison.
Okay.
So as long as I meet all the requirements, of course.
Yeah.
You don't see a problem with it.
No, I think it's okay. Board, Tom, any more comments?
No.
No? Okay, well, hold on, wait for your application then.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving right along, we're into the public comment section. If you wish to make any public comments, just to clarify the difference between a public comment session and a public hearing, public comments are just in general terms, they're not part of the record of the application, but in a public hearing, any of the comments made during a public hearing become part of the record of that application. We generally don't have the big audience for public comment, but there is a list, I'm going to try and see how many are on the list and see if we can regulate.
We didn't do it. We didn't do a list.
What?
We don't normally do a list.
We haven't done a list, okay. All right, well, we'll go right into it. Bear with us as we go through it. We'll probably do it by hands, I, I wish you said your name and your address in the comments, I wish you'd keep it down to a three minutes, Lyle keeps telling me I'm too easy on you, so we're going to try and keep it brief, and, so who would like to make a public comment? Come on up. You're getting around a lot better each time you come. You're getting around a lot better each time you come.
Yes, I am. Good artist and a good physical therapist.
Okay.
I want to make a comment about the proposed Moham Preserved Testimonial Gateway project. I read through the summary of the project, which seems to get more complicated every time we look at it. And today I also... Oh, was it yesterday? Anyway. I drove Gatehouse Road onto Route 299, and it seems a bit scary there. It's not a good sightline, so... And the other side is between houses, it's in the neighborhood. So what I would like to have is a positive declaration that just the driving is going to... Cars and buses going in there are going to cause problems, and then the traffic going back on Main Street, which... Oh, did I say my... Andy Weiss Bartzak of Gardner. I drive frequently on Main Street, and over the 11 years I've lived here, it's gotten more aggravated. So this project appears to be going to put a lot more cars on the road, and 299 up there is a difficult place, especially for people that don't know the area. So what I would like is a positive declaration, because there are a bunch of aspects that have to be thought about and commented on, and we need a comprehensive environmental impact statement. Because what I got from the summary, I'm sure other people will think of other things that they'd like us to think about, so if this project goes forward, we can make it as easy as possible on the people who live here, as well as, I guess, on the people who will be driving here and looking for ways to park. Thanks.
Thank you. Luke?
Luke Carriola, 6 Jacobs Lane. I want to preface what I have to say by, I'm for the project. I'm opposed to the entrance off 299, coming out off Jacobs Lane. I know they just cut, compared to the town, along my side of the road, down probably about 1,000 feet. It does make the site distance to the proposed entrance a little better. But there's still the problem of the short entrance into the parking area. I believe it's going to be very popular, and I'm afraid of backups onto 299. They had a plan, Plan B, which was to block off the entrance that exists now to Gatehouse Road, that point there, and go further up, go further up 299, and then cut, redirect Gatehouse Road, so it would be perpendicular to 299. As it stands now, coming off Gatehouse Road, people coming out, coming toward the village, have to look back to try to see traffic moving at supposedly 55 miles an hour, and that's dangerous simultaneously coming out of Jacobs Lane. They're looking right, they're looking left, and we're looking at the existing Gatehouse Road. I think their Plan B, again, which would make a right angle coming off Gatehouse Road, eliminating that triangle. People coming out of Gatehouse and look right and look left, rather than looking back. Plus, their Plan B has three times the, I guess it's called, drive rate into the parking area, which would allow for more vehicles. If they backed up, would have a greater distance and a greater number of vehicles that would have a chance to turn around, or whatever. But leaving that parking area and that drive area, they're coming out onto Gatehouse rather than 299. I for Plan B.
Thank you. Any else who wish to make a public comment?
Hi, my name is Beth Weiss. I'm the vice president of the Shawangos Runners Club, which is a New Paltz area-based group. It's come to our attention that a race that we organized at the West Trax parking area a few weeks ago on a Monday night had an issue where participants were parking on 4455. We hadn't realized that until this week. This has been a race series that's run on 43 years. It's been at that site for 25 years, at least, in my memory, and we have never run out of parking there. We normally get about 175 people. This year, we got 235. So it was an unusual number, record number of entrants, and we were, and the Shawangos Runners Club wants to take responsibility for this, we were inadequately prepared to redirect the traffic. So I wanted to just say that in the future, the Runners Club is working with Moham, who, by the way, has never charged us. In all these years, they don't charge parking when they use their facilities. They don't charge us a fee, so that we are able to offer this race series to local families for $30, or an entire family for five weeks. So it's a bargain, which probably results in lots of people showing up. In any case, in the future, we have a plan that if there is overflow parking or shortage of parking, we will redirect people to the Moham Preserve headquarters, and we will shuttle them up to the site of the race, so they don't have to walk up the highway to get to the race start. And in addition, as we do with all of our races at Minnewaska, where we tend to run out of parking, we will strongly encourage on all registration forms that they park. So hopefully, single individuals will not be showing up to your home car. So we'll try to get people to park. In any case, I just wanted to let you know that we are willing, and we are taking steps to prevent this from happening in the future.
Thank you. The other one, the board.
Good evening. Thanks to the planning board for allowing these rather open-ended opportunities for public discussion and the expression of concerns about the future of our environment.
Erwin, again, name and address.
Erwin, Spurber, 142 Bruntwood Road in New Paltz. And just because a couple of town board members get stressed out because I don't live in New Paltz. In fact, I pay my taxes to Gardner, but my... Also, my property taxes to Gardner, but my school taxes to the New Paltz School District. So at least I have some morals of legitimacy I trust to resist here at this hearing. Specifically, I want to talk about the Environmental Conservation Board's report to the New Paltz Planning Board dated June 18, 2014. It's an evaluation of the Moham Preserves project, and some of these points have been made previously in various forums and hearings, but I want to focus on a growing concern I share with many other residents of New Paltz and Gardner and some of the other towns in the foothills. The Environmental Control Board's report to the New Paltz Planning Board indicates three types or categories of harmful impact likely to arise if the Moham Preserve is allowed to go forward with its proposal for the testimonial gateway project. One of the ECB's concerns is the public health impact arising from increased tourist traffic and gridlock, and I trust everyone here knows what happens on many, many weekends on Route 299 and on Main Street in the village of New Paltz. The concern made very clear in the ECB's report is that there's going to be, there would be, an inevitable increase in carbon monoxide and particulate emissions along Route 299, along Main Street in the village, and on some weekends, the gridlock would be stretching all the way, and has sometimes stretched all the way, from the thruway ramp on up to Moham Preserve's entrances and parking lots. And of course, that would, in the future, also involve the massive project at the testimonial gateway with Brandon parking lot, a Brandon parking lot constructed there. This concern in and of itself is a red flag that calls for the most careful scrutiny, which can only be made possible if the New Paltz Planning Board makes a positive declaration that would result in having a full environmental impact statement. And that would make it possible to consider thoroughly the cumulative public health impact of Moham Preserve's various projects that it, for its own reasons, prefers to project in terms of public awareness as though these projects are all separate and discreet, when in fact, they are intimately and integrally linked to each other. The New Paltz Planning Board and the public have a profound responsibility to know about these potential consequences before any massive development proposal is approved. And I want to emphasize, of course, that, as I trust most people appreciate, the Environmental Conservation Board is an independent component of the New Paltztown government. It's not some utopian dreamy-eyed group of tree huddens from the redwoods in California. A second concern in the ECB's report is the ecological impact arising from greenhouse gas emissions due to still more motor vehicles blocking up 299 and Main Street. For a community that prides itself, I think justifiably prides itself, on its commitment to the task of reducing global warming, the planning board and the public need to take a hard look at what will happen if even more vehicles are put onto our most crowded roads. And one of the speakers immediately before me pointed out something that has a very important kernel of truth to it, namely that this testimonial gateway is going to attract lots and lots of new tourists, lots and lots of new vehicles in this very same traffic lane on 299 and Main Street that is already overwhelmed and overloaded with cars and greenhouse gas emissions. And so we need to take a hard look at that and hear from experts on both sides, not just the page staff and cheerleaders from the Moham Preserve. Last but not least, a concern that I trust a lot of people are increasingly taking into account, and I've been talking to more and more folks, both at the New Paltz campus and in the community about this, is the basic quality of life. I mean, it's becoming more and more difficult on weekends. Some people find it virtually impossible to do any shopping, to get around anywhere on or near Main Street, and it defeats the whole purpose of our quaint community environment, which is one of the reasons I was so thrilled to move here in the 1970s, because it's almost as though we have a Times Square level of traffic in a quaint little community with all of its image of an idyllic place for people to enjoy nature. And last but not least, I just want to point out that those of us who have deep misgivings about the Moham Preserves project are not in any way whatsoever against nature. We're not against mountains. We're not against the great outdoors. We are against, and I'm just now speaking for myself, we are against using terms like land conservation and land preservation as a banner or a smokescreen for what amounts to massive development that leads almost to the equivalent of a disnification of our community. And once we allow projects like this to go forward, the problem is there's no going back. And if the precautionary principle means anything at all, it means that we need to look before we leap. And the only way we're going to be able to do that looking is if we do in fact have a full-fledged comprehensive environmental impact statement. And I want to thank the planning board for its willingness to listen to concerned members of the community. Last but not least, there's a second one I said that's... I didn't have copies of the Environmental Conservation Board's report. This is unedited, and anyone who wishes a copy, I'll be glad to give it to you, and you can also get it from the New Paltz Town Clerk. But I have copies for anyone who wishes to have it.
Thank you, Erwin.
Everybody needs to know what it's about.
Wait, can I say one thing to Kelly? I can't find that report anywhere.
Erwin, if you give it to Kelly, she can distribute it back to...
Give it to Kelly.
Oh, we do?
I got it from the town, so if you want one...
No.
No extra charge.
Come on up, yep.
Kelly, can you resend it? Sorry. Two trips to the emergency room this weekend. A thousand blessings on the New Paltz rescue squad, but I'm really tired. I want to thank you for your attendance in the Moham Preserve's plan, for the preservation of the Moham Preserve foothills. As you know better than anyone, the Preserve has been before you since 2011, and this plan is completely consistent with that count, open space, creating and grading, and on land protection laws. The project is already undergoing coordinated review by nearly 30 consulting agencies under CEPR, and the Preserve has already submitted to the planning board studies totaling well over 600 pages of analysis. This research comes from credible and respected sources. And I've tried to learn a little bit more about the citizens of the Shawangos, because in my opinion, they have made some serious misrepresentations about the Preserve's plans. And your minutes show that you have been very responsible about rectifying some of those. For example, the minutes of your December 8, 2014 meeting, in response to the claim that you had rejected the Preserve's previous plans, the planning board meeting 2014-4010, which states under the application of new section, might have a lot of breeze that the plan wasn't rejected. They didn't take any action back in June. So that's a sort of mythology that sometimes begins to snowball and make some credibility and let you go back and do the minutes. Opponents of the project also claim that the Preserve plans to make a profit in a way that is inconsistent with the status of a nonprofit. If that were true, which it is not, that would trigger an investigation by the state attorney general, and we would all be calling home. The fact is that nonprofits are allowed and even encouraged to maintain an endowment or other means of providing for their sustainability. In nonprofit world, writer Peter Rinkerbaum points out that there is no limit to the size of the Reserve Fund, as evidenced by the Harvard University endowment, now at $35 billion. Since this is a serious allegation made by members of another nonprofit, I tried to learn more about citizens of the Shawangos by going to GuideStar, a nonprofit organization that delivers the highest quality and most comprehensive bill and profit information to encourage and restore, to research thoughtful giving. It is the site most of us go to to learn about the mission, board of directors, and finances of the nonprofit. My GuideStar search for citizens of the Shawangos came back with this, I'll send it to Kelly. It says, "Your search for citizens of the Shawangos produced zero results." Maybe it registered somewhere else. Then I searched for wildapricot.org, which appears to be the umbrella organization under which Citizens operates. That led me here to the American Society of Thermalism and Climatology, which also has not filed a law, 900. So if you understand the science of the nonprofit, you go to GuideStar, everything you could possibly want to know about Moham Preserve's finances is there. I can't find anything on citizens of the Shawangos. Maybe I'll look in the wrong place. I bring this up because there is a letter in this week's New Paltz Times from Claire Altman, with whom I've worked on an unrelated project whose family is associated with Baruch College, which operates 11 foundations, according to GuideStar. The very first one reports annual income of over $21 billion. The very first one reports annual income of over $21 billion. I'm telling you this because nonprofits such as Aru College and Mohawk Preserve fill very important gaps in our educational and environmental communities. And to remind you that when I make my annual donation to the Preserve, I voluntarily help to fund one of our planet's last great places. And if I and thousands of others didn't, we would either be asking our town or our state to take a little of this, taxes, or if the unthinkable happens and the Preserve is driven to abandon this project, you'll probably save hundreds of houses on those 857 acres. That's going to be a traffic problem. I would prefer to see my donation go to restoring the gatehouse instead of paying your engineer and your attorney to sit here and listen to one red herring after another. My custom-made exclusive. Finally, from the Department of Unintended Irony, I rang to your attention the most recent newsletter from the Menhudson Sierra Club, who recently submitted letters urging you to conduct a full EIS. This is the very same Menhudson Sierra Club that directs people to Gertrude's Nose. How do you get to Gertrude's Nose? You go right down Main Street, you go past the Mohawk Preserve, and you keep going to Menawasta. And even better, there's more. Just last month, the very same local Sierra Club sent a letter urging everybody to take a hike on thought of the crag on the Preserve. That was June 20th. So unlike the management of our local Sierra Club, the trail guides understand that the Mohawk Preserve is the best and most responsible steward of the Shuangun Ridge. Hard point required EIS because it harmed our community character. CBS requires an EIS, but it will harm our community character. The Mohawk Preserve is our community character. It doesn't need an EIS. Thanks.
Ron, and then, no, you're in it. I'm just getting one behind me.
Thank you. I'm Ron Mapp, an all-time New Poles resident and a member of the Mohawk Preserve since 1987. And I've been involved with the development and evolution of this project. First off, I'd like to commend the planning board for your diligent and effective efforts in reviewing and improving quality of projects in public order. An incredibly valuable public service. And I'd also like to thank the public, which is actually local citizens, who have contributed to the shaping of our project since literally 2011. I attend planning board meetings, I read the newspapers, and I talk with countless folks in the community daily, and frankly welcome the lively engagement of many, even when they offer very, very tough questions. And I do understand, and I do appreciate, that there are individuals who have honest differences with us with many aspects of the project. However, I must say, I continue to be dismayed at the misinformation that pops up in letters in the editor and frequently in these public comment periods. Well, I have to say, this is not the time to address all of these, all the aspects of the project. And we look forward to the formal public hearing, but not in the one that's underway. But I'd like to take just a few minutes to debunk some of the often repeated negative so-called facts about the Preserve's projects. In fact, one I heard this evening. The project is not a massive, large-scale development project, as some have stated. In fact, those of you following the New Poles Facebook page saw this weekend, Saturday evening, that an individual, he says he visited the Citizens fundraiser yard sale, and he was told there that the Preserve's project is a gargantuan plan disguised as a nonprofit development to circumvent the normal planning expenses required. I hope that's not true, but that's what was stated on the project, on the Facebook page. Let me tell you, this area of the Mohawk Preserve foot hills is somewhat larger than New York's Central Park. New York's Central Park is 842 acres. This is 857 acres, plus or minus a little bit. Yet in that area as large as Central Park, the Preserve's plan has only approximately eight acres, 1%, approximately 1% of that total area that will be disturbed. And this disturbance is spread across three sites that have been carefully selected for the least impact. Again, eight acres out of 857 acres spread over three sites. Virtually all of the foot hills will be in the state that you see them now when the project is completed. Wide open farmlands, extensive tree cover, and glorious vistas that are iconic aspects of this community. I read in the paper, and I've heard a bigger here also, that the Preserve will construct a visitor center near the testimonial gatehouse. We have no such plans. You and others are welcome to visit the Preserve's actual visitor center in Gardner, which was built in 1997 for $3.2 million, entirely with money raised from charitable individuals in this community and the surrounding areas. It is open free to the public year-round with plenty of free parking for visitors. What our plan is called for, and if you read it carefully, it says, "We are going to create a visitor contact station, similar to those at our other trailheads." We consider the testimonial gateway a trailhead. And if you visit any of our trailheads, you'll see that all of these visitor contact stations are very small enclosed structures for a ranger to operate out of as he or she welcomes visitors. In our submission, there is a picture of one of these, and nothing mysterious about it. And I think the structure that appears, we don't have the final design for it, will be probably less than half the size of your kitchen. It's not a visitor center. It's a visitor contact station. This past week, in the New Poles Times, it was stated that the Preserve plans to construct a pavilion, quote, "similar to the Slingerland Pavilion at Spring Farm," characterizing that our plans, again quoting, "we plan to hold open-air events" at the testimonial gateway. This is false. The submission clearly states, it's on the website, that we intend to construct, again, and I quote, "a small, open-air, Mohawk-style gazebo summerhouse at the east end of the Gin Oak Ave." Now, there's even a photo of this concept in the submission. It's like, this structure is likely to have a diameter of about 10 feet, not particularly large. Could be a little larger, could be a little smaller. Many of you know Mohawk gazebos. They call them summerhouses. We call them summerhouses as well, from the Not-nas property, where each can accommodate no more than about eight people, some only two. We're going for family-sized summerhouse. Basically, a place to sit and enjoy a visit. That's what it is. The one we propose allows visitors to sit down and take in the stunning view of the ridge from the tracks and beyond, all the way beyond SkyTop. Certainly, this is not a wedding or party venue that is alleged in the paper. I've also read that the Preserve plans to open shops at the testimonial gateway. Again, not true. Even in our Gardner visitor center, we don't have a shop. We have a cart. We call it a gift cart with a limited supply of caps, t-shirts, bug spray, energy bars, water that visitors might need before they venture out hiking or biking. And we encourage visitors to shop in New Poles and Gardner for whatever other needs are. And I've heard again tonight that the Preserve's project is to bring in more tourists to experience the Mohawk foot hills. We see this differently. We see our plan as accommodating existing demands as well as some small incremental growth generated from outside. In fact, our own studies of power at our trailheads show that most of our visitation is by locals. It's not by so-called tourists. Some people think they're lying. And let me here to sum up by saying, as I've expressed to many individuals individually and to groups as well, that I at the Preserve welcome opportunities to take you out and visit the site. If you don't want to wade through 600 pages, we'll take you to the site, walk the site with you, let you see exactly what we're planning to do, listen to what your concerns are, consider them. And at the end of the day, I think when this is all reviewed, the Preserve's project will provide an extraordinary benefit for this community, allowing the historic landscape that most people in New Poles have never visited to be enjoyed by the community through safe and managed access to our territory. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Working on, get a policy for public comment. Anyhow. Gentlemen, Mapp is walking up now.
Hi, my name is Stan Alton, and I'm president of the citizens of the Shuanguns. I mean, it's interesting to be referred to almost like there's some kind of mysterious group. We're not a very mysterious group. We're people who live in and around either New Poles or Gardner, who are concerned about the quality and the character of our town. I must admit, I'm really quite chagrined at some of the comments that have been made about what our intentions are by Kitty, who I happen to know from working with her at Unisys. The comment that she started with, we never accused the chairman of saying that they rejected the Mohawk application. The night in reference was, we testified at that particular hearing in the review process that there was a question of segmentation. And if I'm not mistaken, on the video recording that is actually up on the website, when the public hearing and the review was over and the board was discussing this, there was a question of whether it was a question of segmentation or not. And I believe several members of the board said that they thought segmentation was an issue and that Mohawk Preserve needed to address it. I apologize if I don't understand, if I didn't at that point understand the difference between the review process and the formal hearing process. But that is the comment that was made at the time that the board asked for Mohawk to go back and to deal with the segmentation issue. I don't think that that's a misrepresentation of what we have actually said. We've never attacked the issue of making a profit. Quite frankly, as I teach in my classes at Aru College, nonprofit management, a nonprofit is a corporation like any other corporation. It agrees to certain restrictions in terms of who benefits from what the corporation does in consideration for the tax exemptions that they enjoy from the federal government and the state government, and in many cases, local government. The idea is if you don't make a profit, you're going to be out of business because you really have to be able to pay your bills. So it's not a, we don't call it profits in the nonprofit world. We refer to it as positive fund balances. So nobody's objecting to the issue here. What we are raising is that this is not a small project. This is 857 acres, and if you look at the adjoining relationship with the property, OSI has recently purchased, it's the size of the village. To say that there's no concern about tourism is not consistent with recent articles in the paper, which actually have the executive director of the Mohawk Preserve touting a tourism sign-in in terms of encouraging more tourism to the area. Now, we're not opposed to tourism, but we are saying that there's so much happening within the town and village of New Poles, much of which impacts traffic, that one really needs to understand what we are actually talking about here. And it really is a cumulative effect. It's not just Preserve, it's CBS. It's not just CBS and the Preserve. It's the discussion that's going on over the bus depot. There's a lot of activity here, and the only way to get to the bottom of what's really going on is to have a serious look at what the impacts are here. And that's why we're suggesting that there really needs to be a positive declaration. I have to say, going through the thousands of pages that have been posted on the web, some of which gets posted in a timely fashion, some of which doesn't get posted in a timely fashion, is a very complicated and long-drawn-out process. We think at some point the board should declare a positive declaration so we can have a much more open, much more transparent conversation about what this project's impact on the town is along with some of the other things that have been talked about at the same time. That's what our position is, is that for the board to make an informed decision, it really has to have much more independent information about what's actually happening here. There are impacts on the residential community that's near the gatehouse. There are impacts on the village. We think those really need to be understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Yes, sir.
Oh, can I make one other comment?
I don't know. I think you're cutting in there.
Yeah. And just, there was a reference to Wild Apricot. That's simply, that's simply the service where our website resides on. If you simply type in citizensoftheShuanguns.org, you'll find our website.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Larry Dainight. I live at South Mountain Road. And I've been asked to read this letter by C.A. Rodriguez, the planning board. The Mohawk Preserve's application for development of 857 acres of New Poles land should be treated in the same strict way the board would treat any development of this size, this nature, and in this consequential location by anyone. The Sierra Club, the town's own environmental conservation board, and others have presented ample reason for the board to consider the partial impact studies previously submitted by a Preserve to be inadequate. There are sufficient cause under CEPR to require a full environmental impact study, complete with public scoping, and we would expect any response from nature preserve who have already volunteered, here is truly to the C.A. Rodriguez. By the way, that's three sentences.
Okay, Emperor Boss, you know, I, Ron, I actually enjoyed speaking to Ron Mapp. Because we all know that he's an expert on Renactor Chinese architecture, and it's a pleasure, and an expert on covered bridges. And we think that obviously the way to settle these conflicting visions is the fact that we have a procedure to do it that would be completely and consistent with the democratic spirit and ideals of New Poles, which is to follow it, complete CEPR, and work it out. And the citizens will live whatever that turns out. Just remind you again of what happened in Catona over CBS, that the CBS application for doubling their size was rejected because they had a comprehensive plan and would set a limit on the size of big box stores. And it seems to me that where we are really in trouble is proceeding piecemeal by various applications apart from a comprehensive plan and a plan that should be informed by a real discussion of what kind of village we want. And then we can go and reject other ones that are setting up an environment that's going to be increasing bitterness and no procedure to do it. One of my disappointments in the recent election is no one said, "Let's talk about what kind of village and town we want to live in." And I hope that appears in the next election.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to make a public comment?
Do you want these published?
You can. I will point out to the public that because this is a subdivision, there will be a public hearing on it that we have to schedule. And at that time, people, we ask to raise issues after they have reviewed the material on it. So this isn't the last time you'll have an opportunity to speak. I would also point out that the board does take written comments on all the applications at any time. Generally associated with public hearing will take written comments. We have a timeframe for that for it. So there is opportunity to submit written comments through to Kelly for this application on it. With that, I am going to move on to the, my next item on the agenda, which is the review of the application, Bloom Gardening.
Hi.
How are you?
Ah, how wonderful, that. Time out.
Hi. We're gonna have that about you.
She was starting Dave gave me a letter.
Okay, well, Dave walked through what he found out today, and then we'll be able to talk from there.
Looked over the, I got these last week. There was a couple of items on the EAF that some from Rich. There's a waiver request that was included. They were asking for a waiver of the contours of grading, which I think was not a good idea in this case. I went out to the site and took a look at it, and it was not sloped from back to front. It actually slopes toward the middle and then toward the property to the north. And the neighbor, the owner to the north, was there, and could actually see the grass is before it's been watered, been running to this, that way. We really need to do something to make sure that the grading runoff does not increase by this proposal. We looked at the rain gardens that were being proposed. There's a couple issues with that. Without knowing how they were graded, I couldn't see how all the gravel is going to be treated by the rain gardens. And then the other issue is the DEC doesn't allow rain gardens to be used on roadways and parking lots. We need to come up with something different on that. There's a couple really minor site plan issues. Looking for light fixture cut sheets to show the existing wall.
It's on the property. It's shown.
Yes, I missed it. Sorry.
It's labeled Sistern on the survey map, and it's labeled with a circle and W on the segment. It's right at the corner of the back deck.
We were talking about the easements for the sidewalk, and George probably can offer the language on that, and also... Pardon me?
I've asked for that.
Just reviewing the town. The sign requirements is 10 feet back from the property line. There's other signs in that neighborhood that certainly aren't 10 feet back from the property line. Do you want to go for a variance to that, or put the sign back? And then we really need to have some details on what's required on drainage for the new driveway.
Yeah, when I contacted the highway department, they said that the highway superintendent would have done that. I'm anticipating that there's going to be a culvert underneath there. That's why I drew it in on the site plan.
So the catch basin takes water across the roadway
Yes.
to the east, and to be able to put that driveway in, you're going to have to be able to pick up water in the ditch to the north.
Right. Which would necessitate a culvert under the driveway, under our proposed driveway.
I would say, talk to Chris and get the details on the map, but that needs to be part of the improvements on the site plan. The biggest issue is the way the driveway...
I did, just so that you know, I did contact the DEC about the EAF and wetland issue. And he went out, Brian Dunn, a biologist, went out and looked over the site. He's actually very familiar with North Ohioville Road, I guess, and said that it was basically, there's no wetlands where we're proposing or... He does recognize the fact that there are wetlands across the street from us to the east, as well as to the property in the rear that wraps around our property. So... But he is confident that it's not within 100 feet of our property line. So that was that. I guess that we'll just have to get some topo and get the drainage just going away.
Yeah, basically, we did send the application up to the county, so it will be on the county meeting on beginning of August. We'll see what, if, what they have to say on it. But I think when Dave was out, that's the issues that we have pretty well summarized in that note. So to the extent, maybe we can get something back in time for our second meeting in August.
August 24th.
24th of, I never remember that. That's why she kept giving me this. August 24th.
What would this have been on?
If you get it back made by August 10th.
Which is the planning for the, well, took care of it, right?
Well, county will meet the first Wednesday of the month. So I'll know what the county will have said on that, and if it's something they have an issue with, we will get to that too right away.
Okay.
Okay? To show on the plans or what have you on it. But I think these issues that we're looking for, and I know the time limit that you're working on.
Yeah.
So we'd like to get you back on the agenda for the August meeting, the 27th, and try to shoot for that, with that. If questions come up, or do you have some preliminary, feel free to discuss it with Dave, so that you two could be in agreement on how we're going to handle the drainage and rain gardens.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. I appreciate that you actually put us on the meeting, that you got the review done. I really do appreciate that, because I realize that we're dealing with a compressed time schedule, but we do appreciate it. Thank you.
The board have any comments?
I have a comment.
You got a comment, Ray?
I do. The driveway is 24 feet wide, so I measured my road, Springtown Road, which is 21 feet wide, and the car is traveling in either direction at 55 miles an hour, including large trucks passing each other, don't have an issue with 21-foot-wide driveway, I mean road, but we're proposing a 24-foot-wide driveway. I was wondering if that was excessive, and should 18 feet be adequate for vehicles traveling 3 miles an hour in and out?
Well, I did it as per the town standards, so I, you know, sure, if you want us to make it less, I'd be happy to.
Town standards are 24 if you've got parking on each side?
Yes, yeah.
The park that you're going in with could be down smaller. I was actually marked up 20 feet would be fine on that.
Do you want to, I'd be happy to do it at 20 feet. That would be great. Okay? We reduced it to 20 feet.
Yeah, where there's no parking.
20 feet wide. And also, just to let you guys know, that we did reduce the parking from 25 proposed in the back to actually 20 with the four-van parking. We still need four vans, but we went through and really looked at how many employees we have coming that would be going into each van, and so Liz figured that we could get away with less, so we did reduce the parking number in the rear, and located a handicap in front of the existing garage, where it's already paved, and worked out a ramp system going up into the existing...
Right, sure thing.
So that worked out actually very well. I was surprised. I don't think there's anything other substantially different on the plans. So we added lighting and the other things that you folks had asked for.
Okay.
Okay.
Just a second. Just on your end there.
And I'm going to actually do the same thing you just did and take a picture, if you don't mind, of the original.
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you. It's very, actually, handy that you guys do that.
Well, just to make sure we're on the same page. When you walk out, you knew what we were talking about.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to sign. I guess I have to sign for...
That doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Okay. So hopefully we'll see you at the...
At the end of, at the end of August, yes.
End of August.
All right, great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, who's coming up? I'm not playing. How are you doing, Glenn? What I'm going to try and get you guys to do is talk to the crowd using diagrams on it, so they can hear you and don't have to look at your backs all the way through. So if it's easier to stand on, if you're going to talk in general, how are you looking about doing this?
I think I brought a tripod, so I was...
Why we set that up? We have it. Yeah. Kelly has it. This...
The best place to put this. On the podium, maybe?
Yeah, I think I'm going to say that. Swing over here, we can swing over here. I just want to...
So I'm Glenn Holman. I'm the executive director of the Mohan Preserve, and I want to thank you for taking the next step in reviewing our application before you. And as Ron Knapp, who's a volunteer member of our board, said, this is really a conservation and land protection project. We're going to be protecting fields, farmlands, historic preservation assets, wildlife, wetlands, forests, and we're going to be restoring existing parades and trails. And in order to do that, we need to create appropriately scaled facilities to allow the public to get on this property in a safe and managed trailhead, a trailhead, a small one and a larger one, in order to really enjoy this property, to have the property interpreted for them, and to really experience what it's like to walk in this cultural landscape. It's really a farm landscape since early 1677, probably before, and one that was shaped and reshaped by human activity over time, is still in agriculture largely. And so our goal really is to keep it the way it is, but to provide some of the type of wayside facilities and enhancements to the visitor experience that you see at all the other four preserve trailheads, three in Gardner and one in the town in Marlton. And so I'd like to introduce our principal consultant, Ted Kolonkowski from Gardening and Judes.
Thanks, Glenn. I guess our main goals were to sort of respond to the comments on the site plan, and I want to just kind of show how we responded and demonstrate that we're, our site plan application is complete and we're ready to go for a public hearing. One of the key things that these plans shows a lot more detail, we now have a lot of information on these plans that show how we're avoiding the impact. For those of the, those members of the board that joined us on the site locks, I think this will, the site locks will put you into the context of the project. Ron Knapp mentioned that we are developing three sites. A total of seven acres will be disturbed by this development. And another important thing about those three sites is they evolved and historically developed for some purpose, whether it's residential, recreational, or farming. One of the first things is impacts on about land. We're also, we'll talk a little bit about threat and endangered species, and then also compliance with stormwater regulations. Starting with the testimonial gateway, the new information here is really looking at the grading that we're doing on the site. We've got a high point in about this area here. We're generally grading down towards the 299 entrance drive, and our stormwater management system is also illustrated here. We do have bad soils out there for infiltration, so part of our stormwater management strategy is to use undergroundage. So we're getting treatment and we're getting some biocontrol with bioretention areas and dry swales. We're also treating the entire impervious area for the trails that are going to be there, and also the parking area, and it's all going to drain in this direction from the parking, either way from the trail. A little bit more to talk about on the Hasbrook House site. Similar stormwater management concepts where we have soils that are a little bit impervious, so we're also going to be using bioretention areas. We're also going to propose a rain garden to control the runoff off of the rustic shelter up in this area, the worsening turmoil. Does anyone need to be oriented as to the location here on the plant?
I can, or is anybody...
Can you see okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Also, as many of you know, the Humpo Marsh is just to the west of the Hasbrook House site, and this is a freshwater, DEC freshwater wetland. There is a buffer area that's associated with it, and part of our trail system, which is going to be a wood plank raised walkway facility, is going to be mounted on helical piles, so there won't be any disturbance, and that's important for a number of reasons. We won't be disturbing the wetlands, but we also will not be triggering any archaeological impacts by using helical piles. Dave had a question about whether or not we might consider locating a trail on this sort of upland area that runs along the margin between what was agriculture and what is now the wetland. And there's some fairly valuable screening plant materials there, some cedars that we'd like to kind of keep in the plans if we could, so we've sort of decided to just keep the raised walkway in the wetland instead. Another important consideration is our driveway here. The existing driveway is actually in the buffer zone, and it's only 16 feet wide. Because we're bringing in some school buses and we want to have safe two-way traffic, we really need to widen this, so we're going to be applying for some permitting under the RV Corps, and it's an easy permit to get, especially if there's a safety issue, which the two-way traffic kind of triggers there. Again, we're showing the contours and the grading of the site. We'll follow the existing grading as closely as possible. We also have some more detailed views of the development, showing the plantings that are proposed, some screening plants along the entrance. are proposed, some screening plants along the entrance and the bus parking area and screening the parking area itself. One of our other features related to stormwater management is the duck line, which is gonna be out at the Houppo Marsh, allowing this site that has been called the Prominent to become kind of a viewing area for wildlife, is to use a green roof on the duck line. Other than that, we're using riparian buffer to treat the stormwater in that area. This side of the plan illustrates the rustic education classroom, which is shown up on the Worsing Turnpike a little farther. And again, we have a rain garden proposed and the swale along the front of that building. This is...we included the master plan for the River to Ridge Trail. I'll let Peter talk in a little more detail about it. But on our site plans, we're showing the related development that would be in the foothills parcel. I was told that the town UPW has already indicated that they would issue a permit for crossing. This is the hillside lot right here, which will be taken over by the Open Space Institute as part of the subdivision. And then this is Pine Road. And then unfortunately, our matchline turns. So this part of the trail and Pine Road connects up here and continues in this direction towards the Worsing Turnpike. The first part of the trail after it crosses Pine Road here will be a stone dust trail...I'm sorry. After it crosses Butterville Road, will be a stone dust trail to Pine Road. The crossing of the trail is gonna be formalized with typical pedestrian crosswalk and some warning signage on either side of Butterville Road. Once it turns, it'll run parallel to Butterville Road. After it crosses Pine Road, it becomes a mowed, maintained path. There won't be any raining involved in constructing the path. It's gonna be routed carefully to avoid having to take down any trees. And essentially, it's just gonna be a sort of surface kind of repair job. And there won't be any disturbance of any kind. And that's going to run through the open areas and kinda have to meander through some of the trees in some areas. There's actually, where we're showing woods here, there's actually a wood line right adjacent to the road, but then there's about a 20-foot wide clearing. So we'll be able to route it through that clearing. And that it continues through the fields and connects up to the little Worsing Turnpike. The last site to discuss is out at the Clinchfield Farm. And this is Lenip Lane Road, kind of rises into the foothills. There's a farm road that comes off of there, a small farm pond. And I think the Clinchfield Farm is right in this area here. There's an existing small farm pond. Preserve had the idea to create sort of an outdoor education facility, which would consist of a small pavilion on the hillside where you could run educational programs and then have access to this pond for educational purposes by way of a path. And then again, using the same sort of raised walkway system that we're using at Hasbrook House and maybe even a floating dock, get access to the pond through some wetlands. Our stormwater here is gonna be a bioretention area off the back of the roof, which will be a lean-to type roof. Finally, to the details. This is the summer house that we've been talking about, the Mohawk-style summer house that would be off of Lenip Lane near the testimonial gateway. You can see it's really intended to be maybe a 20-foot diameter rustic shelter, and it's just out there for enjoyment of the views. Very nicely sighted. Some of the other elements, if you're familiar with the Preserve, you've seen these things before. Entrance signage will look very similar to what's at the visitor center. Any interpretive kiosks. There are two basic styles, smaller kiosk. In terms of fencing, the Preserve courses in support of controlled access within the Preserve property lines. So there are a couple of styles of fencing that might be used. The duck line concept for out at the Hasbrook House. The rustic education shelter, again, aesthetic recalling some of the farm structures that exist all around the Preserve lands. And the contact station style of building that would be the contact station. You can see these are all very diminutive structures. They're very small, fit very well into the landscape of the foot hills. Some other pieces of the project. Gates will be the same type of gates, style of gates that are used all over Preserve. Tigrails, light racks, light fixtures, a lot of timber nature. We also had a question about how we're gonna delineate the gravel parking areas. And there was a suggestion to use these delineators, which are kind of like a whisker that you draw into the gravel, and it has a bright color to it. It's pretty effective in showing where the parking stalls are. The other thing we added to the plans was to locate some electrical vehicle charging stations. And we did some research online and found some units that are being used by the National Park Service out in Utah. We're also providing the typical erosion and sediment control details. We prefer to use fiber roll systems rather than steel fencing. Steel fencing has always been wasteful to me. Fiber rolls are very effective. They can be moved around, reused, and just left in place. A detail of our bioretention, use the same detail for the rain garden, showing our structure and the under drainage system that will be there. This is really exciting stuff right now.
Dave's having a good time, it's okay.
Pardon?
Dave's enjoying it.
I know. The other thing is the...there's a phenology trail that was proposed near the testimonial gateway, which is gonna be kind of in some valid areas next to the pond. And the detail that we're gonna use for that is acceptable practice by the...that the Army Corps recommends, which is you actually dig out dirt on both sides of the wetland, encapsulate it in a what they call a sausage, it's just geotextile fabric, and then just put the surface over the top. And that becomes a surface walkway that doesn't involve filling the wetlands. We also have a detail of what the raised walk structure would look like here. And I think that's pretty much a look through the additional details. In terms of the River to Ridge Trail, I'll let Pete talk more about it, but it seems to me that it's something that's been discussed by the town and village for a long time, so it is probably gonna fill some needs right now. I'm gonna hand out a couple of passes to make it.
Go ahead. I don't wanna get into that one.
No, no, it's just a simple question. You said that you're from the parking lot at the gatehouse, you're draining to 292. Uh, yeah.
299.
299. Where does it go there? It's all sloping down. Where's the road?
Let it cross the road. It's down the way out along the main road.
It just goes right down the swale.
What happens when it hits Gatehouse Road?
Uh, it goes into the existing drainage.
There is no consistent drainage.
Above the...your parking entrance, there is a drain that crosses the road. But that's uphill, up the road, not down. I don't know where it's gonna drain.
When you get to...what happens now is that the drainage, when you have a heavy rain, it goes...it flows across Gatehouse Road. There is no culvert, there is...well, the exception of one, but that drainage is coming out of Gatehouse Road out. So when you hit the...
We'll investigate. I haven't seen any flooding down there, but maybe some...
We weren't draining either, because...
We'll find out, we'll investigate.
Would it be possible to just... Excuse me, I really don't want my clients answering questions that are usually... When we get to a public hearing, the board can ask questions, but I don't think it's appropriate. I don't...
All right, all right. My meeting. That's good, through this point, I wanna...and then we'll see where we're at.
Tom, Peter Karrasen, I'm a NICEAP architect and working for the Preserve for a long time on this project. It's an exciting time in New Paltz for our recreation. And I just wanna give a little bit of context before I describe the details of the River to Ridge Trail. In 2006, New Paltz took a big step and they adopted a very comprehensive open space plan. And since that time, Open Space Institute and Mohawk Preserve have been working on one of the major goals of that open space plan, and that's the protection of about 1,200 acres in the Walkeville Canes foothills. And exciting happenings in February, OSI was able to close on what they call the watchtower property, which is the Epcolic backdrop to the View a Sky topic, you exit out of the village back in February, which completed this ownership connection from the village of New Paltz to the existing protected lands on the bridge. And that's highlighted in red on the plan. They also handed out a simpler River to Ridge plan, which has the same major features, but it takes away a lot of the graphics on the plan that was submitted. So earlier this year, OSI completes this acquisition connection from the village to the Mohawk to our foothills, totaling about 1,200 acres, all private dollars, not a penny from the town that spent to protect this land. And it meets a major goal, the open space plan. And including the open space plan was providing these areas, providing public access to recreation. They even stepped back in 2013, the town of New Paltz forwarded what they called the River to Ridge Trail. And working in partnership with the Preserve and OSI, who actually contributed to hiring a consultant, or with the Greenlight grant that was offered to the town, went through a design process with the bike and pet committee as the lead, and developed a River to Ridge Trail Phase One, which brought folks from the village of New Paltz, out Route 299 to the Walkeville Farm Market. The trail was anticipated to be alongside the road, between the road and the footway, where all the utility lines are gone. And that was really their basic option at the time, because they didn't control, the town doesn't control these private lands. So with this acquisition, in February, Open Space Institute and Mohawk Preserve has a very unique opportunity to realize this non-mortarized connection from the Walkeville Valley Rail Trail to the resources of the Preserve and the Schwanmoor Bridge. And we've been planning diligently since February to try and make sure that we understand the property, sensitively place some of these routes, and really plan for the future opening of this connection for the public to the Preserve. So during that planning, we've managed to lay out about six miles of trail, which is anticipated to be open free to the public, which will start at the Walkeville Valley Rail Trail, come across the new Carmine Liberta Bridge with its pedestrian enhancements, bring folks down along the Walkeville River to the New Paltz Boat Launch, where there's an existing public parking area at the Boat Launch. The trail crosses Springtown Road at a very safe place with plenty of sight distance, and runs along the whole northern part of what we call the Van Ols farm, that's the flats. That's before and in the flood, it starts coming out of the village. Trail will cross Lewis Lane, enter the watchtower property, which brings you up to a high point on that property with a loop back to the village that gives you a panoramic view of the ridge from that point. And then in working with the Preserve, to then bring that River to Ridge Trail into the foothills and connect to Pine Road and Lenip Lane with a new route along Butterville. And in working with the Preserve, we're able to create this loop from the village into the foothills, through the farms, that will be open free to the public. So even in that portion of the Mohawk Preserve lands, there'll be an opportunity for the public to walk through the foothills without having a day pass or being a member, but only in that specific area. And it's really the most widely used part of the property by the public right now. A lot of folks park on Butterville Road, a lot of folks park on Pine Road, and they walk that Brook Farm, Pine Farm route. And the goal here is to anticipate that and open it up and allow folks to continue to do that as the ownership changes and evolves in the foothills. So OSI is working on a site plan application, a formal site plan application, that'll take into account the properties that they own, bring it before the town of New Paltz as required because it's a considered recreational use. The primary use of these lands will continue to be agriculture. Currently, they're agriculturally assessed, the taxes are paid on these lands, and that will continue. And our hope is to work with local farmers to continue agriculture production on these lands while allowing the public safe and managed access through the property to the Mohawk Preserve foothills. The planning board asked to see this connection back in April, but really, this is an evolution of a town-initiated project that, with the generous donations of private funders through OSI and Mohawk Preserve, we're able, we hope, to bring this project to light for the town and the community, and allow people to enjoy this connection from the village to New Paltz. And one interesting aspect and problem that this contributes to solving is this traffic issue. It's been impossible to walk, or potentially wipe without taking a wiping your hands, to come from the village to the resources on the ridge. This route, coming from the Walkeville Valley Rail Trail and the village connecting, will provide folks with an off-road alternative to driving their cars out 299 and parking at the parking lots. So we feel that when you look at the bigger picture, not just on the 857 acres or the 365 acres, but when you look at the Walkeville Valley Rail Trail to Kingston now, when you look at the O and W, the NIH O and W Rail Trail coming out of Kingston going past Ellenville, the Cassville Mine Rail Trail going out of Kingston into the Cass Hills, making this connection to the foothills, to the existing carriage road system, which connects to Minnewaska and Sam's Point, and ultimately, Ellenville, we're talking about interconnecting 116 miles of publicly accessible trails, which really makes New Paltz a promising spot for recreation. It's one of the...it's gonna be a premier trail network in a beautiful place, and a lot of the...it's gonna be used by a lot of local people who already use some of these resources. And it's really gonna be a benefit to the community. So you can anticipate an application coming before Labor Day to the town from the Open Space Institute, on this project.
Thanks. Do the board have any, you know, high notes? Any comments or questions doing this? You have to, while he's here?
I don't, I have a discussion for the board, I guess.
Okay.
But it's not...yeah, sorry, guys. Should I get into that?
Go ahead.
All right. So I take a lot... So it took a lot of time today because I had time today, so just read through everything on this project. And I feel like it's been literally years that we've been seeing these great presentations and reading so much information. And, you know, I'm really always thankful for public comment and people bring up such great, interesting things, and I think it's a really wonderful part of our town. And I really pride myself on like taking good notes and going through things and learning things and stuff. And just kind of being very, you know, like, oh, a lot of people were saying we should do a full EIS, so we should, that makes sense, to just be, take the more conservative approach. But also, like going through today and reading through everyone's comments and everything we've read and looking at all the pros and cons and blah blah. And also being a small business owner, who I feel like I just kind of get allergic to bureaucracy after a while, this just doesn't seem like that complicated of a project. I really kind of, I mean, it is complicated, involves a lot, and there's, you know, there's things, but yeah, the structure is, it's like a little gazebo. I mean, I understand there's parking lot, there's a lot of impacts, you know, those things, but just throwing this out there to the board, in my personal opinion, I don't see the advantage of a full EIS. I'm willing to have my mind changed, but, you know, it seems like all the, I mean, I know we're not deciding on that right now, but, you know, it just seems like a lot of people bringing up traffic, it's true, but it seems to me that this project manages traffic that we already have and accommodates for traffic that's going to increase no matter what, instead of creating, I mean, I don't know, maybe there's millions of people out there who are like, oh, there's this new gazebo, let me go to New Paltz, you know. So see, I don't know, but it's kind of, it's odd for me to be saying this. So throwing it out there.
Okay.
There we are. But, I mean, I just see, like, I just, you know, obviously, the Mohawk Preserve is not exactly a small business, but I really, as, the longer I'm on the planning board, the more I feel for small businesses where it's like, it just goes on and on and on. And at a certain point, I feel like it's like, we have so much information, let's get this going, let's run that.
Okay.
All right. Another thing that I found interesting in my readings today was that, maybe you guys know if this is right, the parking is less than, I read some random statistics somewhere, 1% of total cars in town on an average day. So, I mean, it's not like a paving paradise, I mean, a little bit, but, you know, I mean, it's not like there's miles of parking.
Okay, feel better now? Good, okay.
I'll get all of that. All right.
I think we do have the application I wanted to see because, again, the, obviously, OSI's application coming is a separate application, but does have an impact vis a vis the Mohawk Preserve application. So in essence, we'll be looking at them somewhat simultaneously, but we have to keep them separate in our minds because they are two separate applications. Clearly, the subdivision application from Mohawk Preserve would have to go first before OSI could get approval on property that they may not own at the time. So there's a sequence that we'll have to go through in reviewing both the applications on it. We do have a wealth of information on it, but like you said, we may not have all the information on it. And that's why we usually went to schedule a public hearing on it to get it down and get what everybody has to offer on it. But from, now just ask around, from my standpoint, I think I have sufficient from a complete application to schedule a public hearing. Because the longer we wait, it doesn't change, we won't get the public input until we do that. So we are the lead agency, we've done that before. But I would like to schedule a public hearing. I would like to schedule it for September mainly because August is going to be a bit of a problem. And our meeting date in September is, the next one, September 16th?
Thursday? Oh, that's a Wednesday.
The 16th? Yeah.
Is that because of the Labor Day holiday?
Yes.
Well, Labor Day is a week before. Oh, yes.
Anyway, we scheduled it for the 16th, that's why we got the room. It's been on the agenda for the past year plus. So.
Mike, you're going to have it here, the public hearing, or?
So we think we can, how's the board feeling, go ahead with it?
I'm just looking at the Jewish calendar.
Yeah, that's what day it is.
I don't think it's a great day to have a public hearing.
Unless it's not during.
That's why I'm checking, that's why I'm looking at the calendar.
That's why I can move it.
Mike, does this have to be submitted to the county?
Oh, yeah, definitely we're going to county.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah.
13 through 15 is Russian.
15 through 16. Tom, it will go to the county, definitely as a site plan and a subdivision. And we could send it up at any time, but I'd rather go through a little bit of a public hearing to see if we need additional documentation and if additional issues come up. I tend to like to send as complete a package to the county as I can. So I think it, subsequent to a public hearing or current public hearing, additional information will be vetted and it'd be more things that we haven't seen yet. So I would like to go with a public hearing on September 16th? My wife's birthday, oh, God. Oh, yeah, bring it here, yes, I can understand that. Okay, so I may be in trouble on September 16th, I'll think about that, I got a bit of time. I, can I get a motion to schedule a public hearing on the Mohawk Preserve site plan and two-lot subdivision? Thank you, Lyle.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think we're done with you guys for tonight. I appreciate the presentation and the material and going over it. And I'm looking forward to your application for your audit also.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ted? Am I going to get the home before midnight? Okay. We could say we skipped.
This is different, I believe.
Oh, really? But I have to say, these are very nice.
Okay, board members, I have a few administrative issues on the, on the agenda I'd like to go over.
Mike? Mike, can I just, do we, have we received a copy of their updated site plan?
Yes.
We have, when?
Kelly? It's all digital.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to look through.
What day did you send that to you?
Shooting? Okay, I think we can conclude our meeting tonight. So we can, yes, we'll go forward on a.